Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Tuesday, May seventh, City Council Work Session for the 2024 Community of the Year. First on our agenda this evening is a presentation on the findings of our Uptown Parking Study. Long awaited results here.
Long awaited results, yes. I'm going to do a quick little introduction here. We have Kevin Clark with HKGI Consultants. They along with an engineering team helped prepare a parking study. Kevin's going to go over kind of the initial summary of the of the study. They go over just a little bit of the actual, not the actual counts, but what they what they found in the uptown at different times of the day and and days of the week and times. And then kind of touch on some of the recommendations they have from the study. And then I'm going to kind of wrap it back up with kind of what our next steps will be now that we've kind of completed the study. I say we finished the study, but what comes next? We're kind of now at the starting line. So I'm going to kind of wrap that up. So I'll have Kevin Clark come up here and he'll he'll kind of go through the next several slides for the summary of the parking study.
Thank you, Dave. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me. All right. As Dave said, I'm here to talk through the Uptown Parking Study, trying to hit kind of the high notes. I know that you've all had a chance to look through the entire study. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer those at the end of this presentation. So in terms of the purpose, what we wanted to do was first listen to stakeholders, understand you know, how are people that are visiting uptown? How are people that have businesses or are living in uptown experiencing the parking situation as well as to collect data and understand you know, at different times of the day, at different days of the week, what do the parking utilization counts look like? How many parking spaces are still available? And then look at some of the possibilities to address problems that may exist. With a kind of focus on looking at, you know, what are the low hanging fruit pieces or what are the things that the city could do to you know, have kind of higher returns with lower cost approaches, not necessarily having to jump to some of the more expensive solutions right away. And then working to provide parking that supports uptown businesses and users. Making sure that the solutions that are proposed as part of the plan are things that are you know, keeping in mind, how do we keep a vibrant, active uptown area so that people are, you know, continuing to come and not letting parking be the tail of eggs, the dog on some of those solutions and then develop some of the park and wide, the district wide parking plan and strategies. So in terms of the listening piece, there were online surveys using social pinpoint as well where people could drop tags saying where they parked, where they had trouble parking, the places that they were going to, open houses, we've had meetings with business representatives and ongoing staff review as part of this. So you know, this really hasn't been happening in a vacuum. And then collecting data. So the industry standards that we typically use are, you know, kind of up to seventy five percent utilization. Given that parking is an expense, it's something that has been invested in, you want to get kind of the the best return on that. Under seventy five percent is typically kind of an underutilized piece where we think, okay, there's still quite a bitter runway for additional parking. Seventy five to eighty five percent is kind of that sweet spot where you've got, you know, one space out of every four, one space out of every five still available. You know, people that are showing up are going to say, okay, this it feels busy, but it doesn't feel, you know, I'm still able to find parking in a very convenient location. Once you kind of start going north of eighty five percent, it starts feeling really busy. You might have kind of the increased circling situation. You should still be able to find a spot eventually, but it may not be the kind of convenient front door space that you're looking for. And then at ninety three percent, that's really functionally full. So when we looked at the counts, we looked through nine o'clock, a noon and a five o'clock. And in the five o'clock counts, we also included a little bit later count when the theater was going as well. The kind of light yellow is lots that are in the zero to seventy four percent, the yellow seventy five to eighty four percent orange approaching capacity and red kind of full. In the morning, really, the only spot that was full was down by the school. During the middle of the day, the two public lots were on the north side were full as well as the library parking lot. So that was a very popular spot in the middle of the day. Still quite a bit of capacity at City Hall as well as at the old library site down on the south end. So and then in the evening, kind of a similar situation with another private lot also filling up. So in terms of kind of what we understood about the kind of system, we understand there are, you know, a number of redevelopment opportunities and some upcoming proposals that are out there, things that are anticipated to move forward. Really heavy parking utilization right at the core, which, you know, is to be expected. One of the things that was noticeable was that as we looked through a lot of the private lots, there was quite a bit of underutilization of parking kind of throughout the day. So the findings, capacity does still exist both on streets and in private and public lots. Certainly the elevated demand kind of right at Seventh and where Eleventh would be at the really core pieces. We also know that there are lots of good initiatives that have been started with the city, shared parking agreements, some of the improvement district explorations. And then the wayfinding and signage plan that all as they continue to move forward should also help address some of the the issues. And we know that new developments will put additional pressure on the parking supply. But we think with some of the strategies that are out there, it won't be enough to overwhelm, you know, what is out there. So we've got as part of this spreadsheet tool for staff to continue to use and monitor parking as new developments coming in to understand, you know, how how does an individual project affect things? And then how does that affect kind of the wider district as well? And something that can be used as new projects come in, building on top of those previous projects as well. So when you think about how to improve parking, the first way you do it is to improve efficiency, better connect people that are coming to downtown with parking spaces that are available. Second option would be to increase supply. That's typically by building parking. That is a more expensive option. Surface parking, lots of times that's, you know, in the thirty five hundred to five thousand dollars per space kind of number. Structured parking can be twenty five to fifty thousand dollars. It, you know, so as a as an approach, we want to figure out how do we get more efficient before we start trying to put in additional parking. And then we also want to stay away from just trying to reduce demand. That's that idea of we want uptown to remain a vibrant place to remain, you know, the businesses that are here remaining here. So that's an approach that we're really not trying to take at this point. We also got ideas about enhancing operations and experience that may not be about increasing capacity, but are about improving the way that people understand uptown and when they're coming to park as well. So a number of strategies that were in the plan that you've had a chance to to look through, we'll go through a few of the ones that we think have kind of the highest approach. When we looked at them, we've kind of sorted those strategies into three different buckets. So the implement now ones, ones that we think will have the biggest impact and are reasonably achievable in short order. Implement as able ones that maybe won't be as effective, but are still worthwhile. And, you know, or ones that really kind of take additional funding or something like that. And then the implement is conditioned merit. So as we've looked at things now, we don't see the need to implement some of the strategies that are down there, but at some point down the road, we know that some of those things may come into play. So there's just a discussion about those so that if that, if you do reach that point, there's the opportunity to and understand what those strategies may be. The first one and probably the biggest opportunity is just the question of shared parking. So when we looked at the parking spaces that were available, using the highest counts that we got at any of the lots, so whether that was nine, noon or five. There are still a number of spaces that are being unused. At any given time, there are approximately two hundred private parking spaces that are going unused just in this kind of nine block area that's being shown. Which represents just slightly less than all of the public parking spaces that are available in the kind of the core of uptown. If we look at just the stalls that aren't being used, if you were able to capture and be able to use, you know, twenty five percent of them, that would drop the, you know, max utilization from seventy eight down to sixty three percent. So there's a lot of opportunity there without necessarily having to jump into to building parking. That approach may be something where the city takes the lead on it and says, you know, we want some of this parking to be available publicly. That'd be the preferred direction. There's also the possibility that as developments come in, there could be private to private discussions about how some of that parking gets shared. So the opportunity for residents or something like that to be able to use some of those spaces that aren't being used right now. We know that there were a handful of concerns that did come up. You know, for example, the church does not use their parking most of the time. Sunday mornings certainly. But their biggest concern is that when they do have funerals, they want to make sure that there is parking available. So some of those agreements that just need to be worked out on a, you know, parcel by parcel basis where for the church, if there's a funeral coming, you know, they have the first right of refusal on those spaces. And those spaces are protected for that day. But most days that's not happening. And so, you know, those spaces could be put to a more productive use. Wayfinding as a strategy and the wayfinding plan that is going on concurrently is addressing some of these things, but you know, getting people off of Seventh and into some of the other parking lots and knowing about some of the other options that are out there will be helpful, just you know, better connecting them with a number of those spaces that are available. And then as the partners in parking or the shared parking strategies come up, there's clear signage that helps people understand when they can, when they can't park in those spaces, what spaces are available to them. This graphic just illustrates where some of that signage would likely go. An exploration of time limits would also, I think, be helpful. Particularly in the the core area that had been something that was in place previously. And it gone away as some of the streetscape improvements happened. We know that sometimes there's a question about enforcement on that, but even if there's, you know, even if most of the people are following those time limits, that turnover just helps keep spaces free, particularly at the front door. I mean, these are the prime spaces that a lot of people are looking for as they're utilizing some of the businesses that are downtown. Strategies related to employee parking, and this may really come down more to business owners taking the lead on this rather than the city. But an acknowledgement that, you know, if a employee takes a space that's at the front door of a business, they're going to use that space probably for six to eight hours. And that that same space could have served a number of patrons, customers. And kept those spaces in kind of an ongoing turnover piece where that parking space could be better used. And if somebody's parking for six, eight hours, it may not be unreasonable to have them park a block or two away. Just for context, kind of understanding the spatial piece of parking. So the image on the left is uptown with the one block, two block and four block radius outlined. The image on the right is the Walmart at the edge of town. So just looking and understanding, you know, it's not that unreasonable to have people parking a block or two away. There's something kind of mentally that happens when you have to turn a corner and you're not necessarily at the front door, but that from a kind of functional standpoint that that is an expectation lots of times gets used. We do recognize that not everyone can walk up to two blocks to reach their destination. Some of the other strategies should help clear up some of those spaces, things like turnover, shared parking, getting employees parking further away should create additional spaces for people at the front door locations. And then also knowing that, you know, typical ADA recommendation is one stall per twenty five stripe spaces. So just kind of as a general recommendation, two spaces per block at opposite corners. If you've got the corners, that's where the ramps are typically to get onto the sidewalk. So there's easier ADA access there. And then those can serve both faces of a block. Certainly a number of other initiatives that are discussed more in depth in the plan. I'm happy to answer questions about them if you've got them. And we do, I think, want to note and kind of hammer home that a future parking structure may, in the very long term future, be needed. But right now with the number of parking spaces that are available as well as any potential locations that a structure would likely go. There are a lot of empty parking spaces that people would be driving past before they would get to that structure. And so we don't see that there would be a lot of demand for that structure to necessitate or to drive that being a kind of preferred option at this point. So with that, I'm happy to take questions, comments.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. In the conduct of the study, did you take a look at any individual uptown events that were driving parking? And I I maybe had missed the that detail in the studied narrative.
Sure. So we did perform counts when the theater was up and going. We didn't have it during, you know, an art fair or anything like that. And that our thought process on that is that, you know, those are kind of one off events and that people understand likely if I'm coming to that, there's a lot of other people that are going to be coming to that and that it doesn't make sense from a kind of an uptown type urban fabric to try to accommodate all of that parking right at the core. So for those kind of one off events.
And did I understand correctly that you said for a permanent parking structure, it would be about twenty five thousand dollars per space?
Depending on kind of the construction approach and whether you go up or down, those costs can vary some. From a typical planning numbers, lots of times we see twenty five thousand upwards of fifty thousand dollars per space for structured parking.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we looked at it at one point a number of years ago and it was forty thousand per space.
Yeah, okay.
Steve? Yeah, one question. When you did your your counts, you know, like at nine o'clock, noon and and four o'clock, whatever those times were, how many different days did you do those counts?
I think we had them Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so you had multiple days.
Yep, multiple days, weekdays and weekend.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, clearly, I, number one, I think it's finally great to have this study. We've been talking about the need for it since I've been on City Council six years ago. Of course, the the derecho, the pandemic and everything delayed all of that. So it's great to finally have this done and have this line in the sand on where we're at today. Clearly, what you've identified is, I mean, fifty percent of our available parking spots, as you identify, those over fifty percent of them are private spots, private parking lots and areas. So that's very key. And clearly those are always available in the evening when we have concerts uptown or the Arts Festival, those things. I mean, they're always available, they get packed. You know, people that come to those events are willing to walk to two, three, four blocks. And that's not uncommon. So I'm not concerned about those. I think as I look forward as a city council person, I think the key is is this entire uptown area we know is going to be changing a lot in the next couple of years, you know, with Bell Tower, with the old library site, with, you know, Broad and Main on Sixth. And and, you know, Brooks talked about a lot more businesses coming to the uptown area just in the next few months. So as those things change, I think it's certainly imperative that we're able to take what we have today and and keep in touch with what's there and model that on a going forward basis. So to me, this is great to have it and how we use it from here to me is even more important than what we have in our hands today. But thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thanks. First of all, yeah, thanks for all the work done on this. It's been really interesting to to read and digest. My question is maybe more of a city staff question, but I'm curious what the like public communication rollout looks like for this, especially because we have different goals labeled short term, medium term and long term. How do how do we keep the public up up to date and up to speed on this? Because this is one of those topics that folks are really interested in and have feelings about. So.
I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Dave. Dave and the staff upstairs, stairs have been working closely with our consultant here. At some point, what we'll do is we'll have this as be a receiving file. So just just a regular action item for the council. But one of the things that we are going to do is just continue to work with the committee that has been involved with this to go through and prioritize those recommendations on there. There's, so we'll have that. We're also going to have the report out on our projects in motion document, which is dovetails into the strategic plan. So we'll be doing quarterly updates on that along with any sort of updates in the in focus, which which we'll do. Obviously with a project like this, as we, as the committee does the work comes up with recommendations or next steps, we'll make sure that we have follow up presentation scheduled here at the council meeting work sessions as we've been doing just regular updates. Here's where we're at in the process. There's going to be a decision point. Here's what we need a direction council on things like that. So those are the the tools that we will continue to use. And we've we've tried to make sure we're being consistent with that with some of our other projects as well.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that because like I said, I think a lot of folks really paying attention to this and they're paying attention to automated garbage. And we've done really well, I think, on communicating those steps early. So yeah, just like people to know that there's there's an action plan in place for all the the parking stuff that people are paying attention to. And yeah, it's nice that it's literally step by step. So thank you for those.
That work. Sorry if I missed it somewhere, but what 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 were the conclusions on parking spots for people with mobility issues?
Yep.
Because we've identified, and I think, you know, what you've what you've shared confirms, or a lot of us have already thought was that there's largely a perception issue and underutilization of what we already have. But there's still the issue of people that have mobility issues and so that those arguments don't really like mean a whole lot to them. So what what were the, what's the bottom line findings on that?
Yep. So I think particularly in the blocks that are seeing heavily, heavy utilization, getting a spot at so two spaces per block that are identified as ADA issues that were would require you know, a tag or a plate. We know that not everybody has those that's experiencing mobility issues. That's the tool that we have, I think, to clearly delineate spaces that will be available for people that are experiencing mobility issues. The other pieces are, you know, some of the other strategies should have the effect of improving the availability of spaces kind of on a block by block and front door basis. So something like the the higher turnover through timed parking.
And then I don't know if it was part of the discussion at all, but everybody will, they've heard me talk about this. So they'll probably laugh, but did we look at doing some sort of a a vehicle that there's a circular route from remote parking spaces, you know, like a like a shuttle? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I think that was, that was one of the strategies as part of the events piece, you know, when you're really asking people to park much further away. We also just looked at where public transit right now is coming through town. We do know that, you know, anyone that shows up by bus or on bike or, you know, via an Uber or something like that is somebody who's not taking up a parking space to be downtown. But on a kind of ongoing basis, no, we didn't look.
Yeah, I'm I was just referring to the core, a shuttle in the core that, you know, wherever you park, you know, that, you know, in ten minutes, a vehicle, the shuttle is going to come around and you can go anywhere you want to. So it kind of takes care of the issue of I need to park in front at the front door.
That, yeah, that was not something that we explored.
Have you, I mean, have you seen that in other?
More on a larger scale basis. I think the the core of Marion still is
Small enough.
Small enough that kind of the level of investment it would take to have somebody driving that constantly may not be a
Yeah.
If I, if I can jump in there. This would be one of those items that I would think that as, you know, committee, you know, the at least the initial committee that was involved in this process. As they reconvene and start talking about what are those those things that we should, let's prioritize and work on. This, this process isn't going to just stop here. For this. So we will to gauge point, gauge his point, we'll continue to work the plan, have the dialogue with the council, council will be able to give input into those things. So, you know, if if as we're reporting this out, the progress of the the work plan here, council said, hey, look, you know, this is something that we should explore and get kicked back to that committee to to do the research, kind of see, is this needed? What does that look like? What is the cost? And then bring that back to council.
It could be even on a limited basis during peak times, peak days, you know, it doesn't have to be all the time every day. But go ahead. You have some? Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I understand we now have an analytical tool that's at our disposal. Besides analyzing for new development, new businesses, new combo residential, commercial space, can that be used to give us a prediction as to demand saturation or capacity issues for specific events? And where I'm going with that is, is that if we, if we know historically, we have X number of people coming to the arts fair, let's say, we have that data that we can just look at that and then have that, the output of that tool inform then a series of strategies that we build around that event. So I I'm really just wondering about the tool's capability, or is it kind of static? And really designed for, you know, a discrete development activity?
Sure. So there's probably two parts to the tool. One would be the the counts, the other one would be the, you know, what do we project with new development activity? So you could say, you know, if we, we've got these counts for Saturday morning and Saturday afternoon, we know the art fair is going to be a Saturday afternoon. We have seen this many people show up to the art fair. We know that typically on a Saturday, they're this We have seen this many people show up to the art fair. We know that typically on a Saturday, there are this many available spaces because of the counts, which is something that's included in that tool. You'd be able to figure out fairly easily your, the difference. And, you know, to say we need to think about how do we accommodate this many more cars? You know, and for example, does the, the school have the capacity to handle that on a Saturday? Are there other options that are out there? Do we need to look at, you know, offering shuttle from somewhere further away?
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah. So this is the second time I think I listened to you make a presentation. Another one was at another committee meeting. And, and so as I listened again tonight and I've read through the study a couple of times as well, to me, the one item that really jumps to the top, and I know that the wayfinding is going on and some other things, but the one item that sees a jump to the top of, of my mind is the private to private shared parking agreements. You know, I see, because especially when we start talking about all of these new businesses coming to the uptown area, that means more employees, that means more cars somewhere. And, and so I think getting these shared agreements on a private to private way to me is one of the quickest, most immediate ways to, to prioritize how we control some of that parking right out of the gate. And we know there's a couple of entities that have alliance share of some of those spots as well. But there's some spots in other places as well. So I think going on that path to me seems to be one of the most critical ones. And I know you kind of made the comment about, well, maybe the private company, private businesses are the ones that need to drive that. Although I think the city can play still, the city still can play a role in coming to the table and, and reinforcing the need for that and why that has to occur. Because as I see this going forward, as more of these larger places come on board like Bell Tower, everybody knows I've got a concern about the parking when Bell Tower Apartments opens up and what impact that'll have. So I think before they come on board, you know, we need to be making some, some changes to some of the parking in the uptown area as to when it's available, when it's not. I don't like a lot of signage, but the wayfinding may drive some of that as well. So anyway, I just think the private to private, as I've listened to this twice, seems to be one of the most important aspects that, that I can take away.
Anyone else? Anything else to add, Dave? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stole a little of my thunder there on the end. We've talked about a few of these strategies already, but, you know, I said earlier, kind of done with the parking study, but what that means is it gets us to the starting line of the actual implementation. The great item though is we're actually getting a, a running start at the starting line. We're already kind of ahead of our parking study. I did place in front of you all the implementation strategies. It was on the screen briefly. I highlighted five or six in red. Those are all items that we are kind of doing today, wayfinding, as you mentioned, the shared parking agreements, as you mentioned. Those are all things we're, we're working on actively right now before the completion of the study. So that's, that's our head start. But as parts of, as we, as we continue forward though, obviously, we're gonna use that modeling, modeling tour, uh, tool to analyze all projects in our uptown district to see what their potential impact is on, on the parking demand and what else can be done, you know, if it's, hey, you need to accommodate some parking on your own, help offset those numbers. That'll be ongoing with every single project we do in the uptown. Obviously, uptown's in a little bit of disarray with the, the, the work, but we're gonna have events over here this, this summer, fall. We'll, we'll be looking at those events, trying to address, okay, what can we fix? What can we tailor on those? So that'll be ongoing. Then obviously, once the, the plaza is opened up, we'll have a whole new data set to start working with again. So it's, it's gonna be never ending on events. But a parking problem for an event means it's a successful event. A couple of other items, creating the Walk Bowl community. Hopefully, I'll get a, a parking or a sidewalk presentation here before you here in the next couple of meetings. As we connect some of these older neighborhoods that are disconnected from our town with quality sidewalks and trails. Hopefully, we can encourage those folks to walk as opposed to keep their vehicle at home instead of bringing it uptown. It all helps. And then the last one is a, I kind of, I highlighted identifying EV stations, not on the slide, but Alliance kind of helped jumpstart that one with a couple of donated charging stations. The strategies within the document there do show some potential locations. So as we take that document, we gotta look at that, work with uptown and, and the Chamber as well as some of our public parking lots to see if there's a some spots to accommodate those two chargers. And that's with all the plaza work being done, generators in the library. A lot of great opportunity for, to kind of strike at that one sooner than later. It's one we can, it's one we can implement since we have the, the equipment. The rest of the strategies, again, we're gonna get these going, the ones highlighted, start looking at some of the others, what we can do and work with our uptown partners to, to figure out which ones we can start taking down. And then again, the modeling will show us where we're gonna run into those. Okay, we're gonna take next steps, whether it be shuttles, parking structures, or some more of the, or the other options that are obviously gonna have to be worked into our, our budgeting process, our CIP, if we need to start building parking lots or building structures. We'll hopefully know about those sooner before a project rather than with the project, which is key is getting ahead of those to be able to properly budget and work with developers to kind of meet those demands.
Okay, Ryan, you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to our, our friends at the Chamber. They, they've been instrumental with the partners in parking. So I want to make sure that they get the credit they deserve on, on that. And they've been a huge part of this process. So a big thank you to them.
Thank you, Chamber. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Next item, speaking of Chamber, is the annual presentation for the Chamber of Commerce. Jill is appropriately, appropriately wearing the green in our brand colors and
Yeah, trying. Okay. Hi, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. My name's Jill Ackerman. I'm the president of the Chamber and I brought Tammy Schlamp, who's our director of member services, and she's gonna help me with the presentation. And of course, we have Brooke in the back who's with Uptown Marion and Uptown is under the Chamber's umbrella. She's responsible for fixing part of the parking problem with the partners in parking and we're responsible for clogging it up with our events, which we're gonna talk about here today. We'll start off with just a high level overview of our strategic plan. So as you all know, our mission at the Chamber of Commerce is to be a leading advocate for the business community, creating an attractive environment where businesses will flourish and residents achieve the highest quality of life. We are a proud part of Team Marion. The City of Marion's an awesome partner and we also partner really well with Medco, the Economic Development Group for the city. So we accomplish our strategic plan really using these five bullets. Membership, making sure that we're growing and retaining our business members and that we're demonstrating value to them. We have a, a community development and tourism bullet. That's just being the focal point to leverage Marion's assets and to provide the best place to visit and raise a family. We have an economic development function, just making sure that businesses grow to the fullest, their fullest potential. And we do that through a lot of business support techniques that we employ at the Chamber. Main Street is our, our Main Street District, a program of the state of Iowa. And then through operations, which includes space, HR function, finance, all of that. So this is a little bit more about our membership. We serve about three hundred, just over three hundred and thirty businesses in the Marion community. The vast majority, almost forty percent, fall into that services and education bucket, followed by finance, insurance and real estate at about thirty percent, retail trade at about ten point nine percent, healthcare and manufacturing are about even with eight point seven percent of our membership. So the City of Marion, as you know, makes an investment in our organization and we are very thankful for that. It allows us to complete our program of work. And we break, we break that funding out into these different buckets, events and new promotions, about forty percent of it goes towards that. Thirty-five percent goes towards tourism, twelve percent to recruitment, recruitment and economic development, seven percent to community development, five percent to Chamber Foundation functions, and about one percent of the money that we receive from the city goes towards wellness and promotion. And that was sort of a spin off of when we were a Blue Zone. So I'm gonna kind of, we have a bunch of slides that pertain to each of these categories. When I sent the slides over to Rachel, I just, Tammy and I were going through it today and I realized I forgot the recruitment and economic development slide. So just really quickly, things that we do to recruit and develop Marion businesses include working with Medco to entertain new developers that are coming into town. We often provide Marion swag to those new developers. We help cover costs of lunches, we give tours. And that's kind of how we, one of the ways that we help drive economic development in the community. In addition to that, once they're here and up and running, we do a lot to support the existing businesses in the community. One of the main ways is through providing networking opportunities. Part of doing business is really getting to know your fellow business leaders. And we provide twenty, twenty-four different networking events throughout the year to, to help build those relationships. We also do a lot of professional development. We have a year-long leadership program known as Marion Leadership in Action. We have a stand-in lunch and learn events turned into a brunch and learn event because a lot of our businesses can't get out during the lunch hour. That program's called Marion Business Academy and we really cover a lot of more technical aspects of business. We cover HR topics, marketing, finance. In fact, we've got a couple we're working on right now that have to do with artificial intelligence and how the business community can use some of those newer technologies. We've got it, also got diversity, equity and inclusion focus on our Marion Business Academies this year. Moving on to events, I'm gonna have Tammy talk about events because she, she's in charge of all of those. She's the reason for the parking problem.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Schlamp, Director of Member Services with the Chamber. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the events and you're gonna see some of the uses of the new streetscape and Festival Street in some of these photos. I know a lot of you have been to the events. So thank you for attending. We put on ten free community events throughout the year that bring over twenty thousand attendees and even more help build community relationships and pride and add to that sense of quality of life. They include farmers markets, music in the park, Christmas in the park and Chocolate Walk. So this is a glance at the Uptown Marion Market on Seventh Avenue, which has been a huge asset. And we're really thankful for that. I'm not sure we'll go back into the park, but we will use the park as overflow. Would really be needed this year. We've had a huge increase in applications. I've had to turn a lot of vendors away. So next year, when the Plaza Project is completed, we'll use some of that space for overflow for vendors. Uptown Get Down, which last year was in the street, which again, this year will be in the street. Great event. We've really been able to take advantage of the streetscape for this event. This next slide I want to show you, this is hard to see when you're sitting in on the street in the event, but captured through photo, this is a look at the festival lighting on Seventh Avenue and how it changes throughout the event. So we did have that on during Uptown Get Down. It really adds to the atmosphere. Chocolate Walk and Shop is a retail event supporting our businesses in the uptown area, includes entertainment. You're seeing a magician and music on the Uptown Artway stage. And this is a great event just to come out and support all of the businesses in the uptown. Very popular, probably one of our more popular events. And Christmas in the Park and Peppermint Walk. Can't wait for the plaza to be done for this. We've got great plans in the works with the help of Chief Fagan for when we are complete with the plaza. It's a big secret. But we've been working on some new plans for Santa's arrival that we're super excited about and wow, the streetscape looks awesome at this event, all lit up at night. Especially with the, the work of the Winter Lights Program and the money that the city has invested in that program. Compliments come from all over the place on how nice it looks. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the data that we've collected at our events over the last year, year and a half, we've been collecting through surveys, data on our attendees. How many, how much money they're spending when they come to events and where they're coming from, more importantly. So here's a look at Chocolate Walk. A hundred and thirty-two people that were surveyed. The average person was spending about fifty dollars and about twenty-eight dollars per transaction. A lot of those folks are coming from Marion and Cedar Rapids, but if you look at some of the surrounding other communities, there's pull from quite a ways away. Small Business Saturday, which is another event, I didn't highlight that, but this is an event that we do Thanksgiving weekend that supports our small businesses. It's a smaller event. Majority of those people attending are coming from Marion. But they're out to shop, they're spending just a little over fifty-six dollars a person and a little over thirty-five dollars per transaction. And they're coming from a lot further away. Most likely that's due to the celebration of the holiday. Christmas in the Park and Peppermint Walk was a, was a better spending event. Those folks are coming out, they're eating dinner, they're spending time, longer time in the uptown area when they come. Just under seventy-five hundred dollars in transactions were logged, two hundred and one dollars per person spent. So they're, they're coming, they're eating, they're shopping while they're attending the event, which is awesome to see. All right, I'm gonna turn things back to Jill to talk about tourism. All right.
Thanks, Tammy.
So tourism is also something that we focus on. We have a tourism committee that meets about six times a year. And one of the things that they plan is our Oktoberfest event, which actually happens in September, the third Saturday in September. And it's again, a great example of how we've really been able to put the Festival Street to work. We bring around thirty craft beer vendors from across the state. And they love the event. It's, it's, they all say that it's, it's their favorite event to come to specifically because of the Festival Street. It makes it so easy logistically for them to be able to pull up, drop their stuff and they don't have to, you know, slug a bunch of stuff and attend into a building. It's just a really great setup. And the proceeds of Oktoberfest go to, toward the Winter Lights Project. So that's been a great addition. This will be our third event coming up already this September. So we're excited about that. We've just started planning for that in the last couple of weeks. This is a little preview of one of the shirts for this year. Says, I do crafts and then all the different craft beer glasses. So make sure to get your, your Oktoberfest swag. We also plan a shop small bus crawl and that's in June. That's to help the retailers in a month that's pretty soft in sales. It's something that they asked for last year. And so we made that happen. We rent a bus and we get about fifty ladies onboard and we primarily focus in the outskirts of Marion. So Culver's Garden Center, Mode, Roots and Flowers, some of the businesses that are not directly in the uptown area as they benefit from a lot of our events already. And so it was a great success last year. It's about four to five hours. And it's just another way that we can support the small business community. We also run the Welcome Center out of our office. So we carry a variety of Marion branded apparel and gift items. We're working on building up our inventory right now. I've got an order of somebody, I think it was Sarah actually, that requested more colors in the Champion Quarter Zip sweatshirt that we did last year. And so we've got, I think, three more colors coming in on that. And so we've got, I think, three more colors coming in on that. Um, along, we've just gotten a new load of mugs and we will continually be adding um adding items to the Welcome Center. Uh, but that was a really key part of um us relocating into a storefront uptown is to make sure that it just wasn't a service business. Um, that we had some form of retail on the front. And uh I think it's been really great. It shows Marion pride when people can wear Marion branded apparel. And um it also is a great, um, it's just a great visual, I think, for people that are coming in from out of town to see, oh, the Chamber of Commerce is right on Main Street. I can go in and get information about what's going on in the community. And we do have a lot of wa- uh walk-in traffic, so that um has served us well. Um, so under Community Development and the Marion Chamber Foundation, um again, we support projects like Winter Lights Community uh beautification projects are primarily what we do with our foundation. Um, Winter Lights being one of those, the Banner Project, Veterans Banners. We uh raised money for the Uptown Artway using the foundation. Um, and this is just one of my favorite pictures of Winter Lights. This is another one. Um, Chris Sherman took this one of the Uptown Artway. Um, the partnership with the parks and with the with the city has been awesome. Our mayor has helped us raise a lot of money for Winter Lights. And again, Tammy mentioned it, we get so many com- uh compliments from all over the place. Anybody that comes to Marion in the winter, residents and people outside of the community just really um are enjoying all of the hard work that's going into um putting up these light displays. I just think it makes Marion look really cool. Um, we also, as many of you know, um do a community-wide visioning process every ten years. First year, uh the first time we did it was Imagine Eight. The next time was Imagine X. We're still working through all of these four initiatives, Heart of it All, Just Keep Swimming, The Little Things and Creekside Pride. Um, and we often um get requests from other Iowa communities wanting to know how we do community-wide visioning. And we always start with, do you have a good city council and is your city staff supportive? Because these kinds of things don't work unless you have a great partnership with your city. And Marion residents are very lucky that we have a super strong, super strong staff. We have a wonderful city council that supports um the vision and the the wants of the community members. And so I think that speaks very highly of our community. Um, we do have this document, the Vision Plan. Um, is really huge. All in all, it's about five hundred pages because it also includes a lot of planning um documents that the city has invested in that tie to each of these um four initiatives. There's a condensed version that just has the narrative that's about seventy-five pages and I can send that to anybody that who's interested in seeing that. Um, we're just working on finishing up um the the final report for our um grant that we received for the North Plaza Project through Iowa Great Places. And we received that designation because of all the visioning work that we did. So um, we're very proud of that. Um, this is just one thing. The final thing, I guess, we will leave you guys with. Marion Chamber and the Marion Chamber Foundation has delivered close to three million dollars back, whoops, excuse me, back to the city of Marion in the form of grants and private fundraising since two thousand and seven. Um, that's ano- another number that we're really proud of. Um, Tammy and I are both uh born and raised Marionites and it's just a, we are just so proud to to be part of Team Marion and thankful for um the city's partnership. And we will take any questions.
You have questions? Steve, go ahead.
Just a comment. I mean, again, I was on the Chamber Board a number of years ago, uh back when it was located on Eleventh Street. And then you came to City Hall. And I think just to see the progression, the growth, the maturity of our chamber for the city of Marion has been impressive as I've seen it over the last twenty-five years. And so I think the other change in having your location on Seventh Avenue has led to another stage of growth, of maturity, uh another level of importance to the city of Marion. And so I just say, just keep doing things because I think you're you're doing a a great job in bringing people to Marion. And I look at some of those slides to see the number of people coming from Cedar Rapids. Uh, cause that never used, when I was on the board, that was not the case. So to see that today and when I go to these events and I see all these people from Cedar Rapids and I talk to them and I get the comments from them about how impressed they are about what's happening in Marion. And to get those unsolicited comments is very gratifying. So I appreciate all your work.
Steve?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jill, um, for the times, over the last uh few years that I've, you know, I've been at the Farmers Market at Toby Park, you know, events up here, um, you know, people without even, you know, trying to bait a comment out of them, they just say, we are so happy of the activities and and everything that's going on in the uptown and in the entire city. And um, so the fundamental I uh fact is you all are um, you know, a prime mover and all of that. So I just want to say thanks because people from all over recognize it. And um for those that I've heard comments, well, why are we doing this or why are we doing that? The first question I ask them is, have you ever participated? And the answer is, well, no. And my, I, then I encourage them, go uptown, go to this, go to that, go to La, whatever. Just get involved and that will change the perception that they have. So again, thank you.
Just ask them why not?
I didn't want to relate uh the bad portions of those con- uh conversations.
Well, um, I think it goes without saying that we have a great partnership with this, with the Chamber and with Medco. Um, the city can invest all the millions of dollars in it in the infrastructure and making the Streetscape look beautiful and amenities and plazas and all of that. But it the it it it, we can't be the ones to to utilize it as well as you guys do. And and so it's a great partnership um that that we work so well together. And um, can uh just be such great partners in making this community the best place to be. And um, we couldn't ask for a better partnership, our investment in the in the Chamber's annual budget is well worth it. Uh, we get more than our money's worth and thank you for that.
Thank you. Would you have any comments?
Bring that February Marion back.
Oh, here we go. That's, that replaced with Oktoberfest.
And I will just add for the, for, just for the purpose of the public and and people who don't know this, but uh we do have representation on the Chamber's board, on the Uptown Board. Um, the city is represented um on their boards. And so um, I think it's important for people to know that.
For sure. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next is a presentation from Steve. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Cooper, the Stormwater Coordinator in the Engineering Department. Marion is a participating community in the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority, which is an organization that aims to protect our water resources in the area. Um, the partnering communities in the the WMA, the Watershed Management Authority, all contribute funds to the WMA to help with operations and projects on that. Uh, Marion's contribution is seventeen thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars, which we have been doing annually since two thousand and eighteen. We have some representatives here from the WMA, uh one of which is Justin Schrader. He's the current Vice Chair of the Board and he's gonna give a brief presentation on uh what we are doing in the WMA and giving you and getting you up.
Thank you, Stephen. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, City of Marion. I appreciate the opportunity to come uh speak in front of you all today and uh talk to you about the partnership that we have with the City of Marion and all the great things we do as a Watershed Management Authority. So in case you don't know, a Watershed Management Authority, basically it's just an agreement between cities, counties, soil and water conservation districts and other stakeholders where we can get together and really do some fundamental watershed planning. We can work collaboratively collaboratively and make sure all the right people are in the right room. Our goal really is to increase communication and coordination within these watersheds, um which has the output of reducing flood risk and improving water quality, which is critical to every member of the community. A little bit of background on the Watershed Management Authority uh in Indian Creek. It was formed in two thousand and twelve. It actually started with a grant. Uh, it's no longer grant funded. It's funded by the participating members of the Watershed Management Authority, which makes Marion's partnership uh e- especially important to us. Um, members in the WMA right now include Marion, Lynn County, Lynn County Soil and Water Conservation District, City of Cedar Rapids, City of Hiawatha and the City of Robbins. Um, I do want to note that the work that we do as a Watershed Management Authority is an important part of your MS four, which is your stormwater permit. Um, you're permitted through the DNR uh for stormwater. And since we do so much work on education, outreach, flood mitigation, water quality, all of that impacts you, your MS four permit, and it's a way that we all work collaborative collaboratively and in partnership. To place uh the Indian Creek Watershed, um it's pretty small. It's it's circled there number nine. It's in between the middle cedar and lower cedar watersheds. Uh, and it's, I want to say it's it's small in size but mighty in terms of what we have going on. So I'm I'm really pleased with the work that's happening in the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority and I want to highlight some of that right now. Um, like I said, we were funded by a grant in two thousand and twelve. Um, because these uh Watershed Management Authorities largely operate on a volunteer basis, volunteering uh communities, folks, uh folks from the county, folks from the water uh soil and water conservation districts. We volunteer our time uh to to participate in these and it takes us a little bit to get going. But some key things that we've accomplished uh since two thousand and twelve is completing the Watershed Management Plan in two thousand and fifteen. It's an engineered document that really tells us where in the in the watershed that we need to focus our our areas to improve water quality or reduce uh flood risk the most. And then uh one of our biggest accomplishments as of late was the Soil Health Partnership funded in two thousand and eighteen, which created the Soil Health Coordinator Position. And we have Marissa Cartwright uh in the back uh who's our our Soil Health Coordinator. And and her position is really key and vital uh to the Watershed Management Authority because she's the person who's out there uh face-to-face with with farmers, with landowners, um getting them to install some of our best management practices and coordinating our efforts uh from a boots-on-the-ground perspective. So really pleased that we have that. Not all Watershed Management Authorities have that and we're more powerful because we do. So looking forward, we depend on our partners to continue our WMA. We are not grant-funded. We're we're funded solely by our partnerships. And this helps make the watershed scale projects possible. We can't improve water quality without doing these things on a watershed scale. So we really appreciate that, just over seventeen thousand dollars that you guys are contributing to us on an annual basis. Um, what that money really goes to is the Soil Health Coordinator Position. So we have Marissa, um and she's pro- promoting conservation practices in the watershed. And us as a partnership, we have access to all kinds of of funding through things like IDALS, through NRCS. And she can have access to that funding and coordinate that and and get the the right people in the room to put some of these practices in the ground. We also do water quality testing and monitoring so we can see um where we're impacting, where we need to install some of these practices and what the overall water quality is in the area. We do a number of public education and outreach events as well as part of our WMA. And folks from the community are actually welcome to to attend our WMA meetings um on a quarterly basis. And then funding also goes to support a USGS stream gauge at Thomas Park, which helps us understand how water moves through this area. All right, so this is from the Soil and Water Conservation District's uh dashboard. Um, the the outlined area here is is our our watershed, the Indian Creek Watershed. Um, Marion takes up a a really good chunk of that watershed. But you can see uh in kind of the blue boxes, there are a significant amount of best management practices that have been implemented o- over the course of the last year or the last few years, um kind of by color there. Um, but ups- upstream of Marion is really where we play a a pretty critical role um out in the watershed, getting those practices on the ground. And then, of course, uh data from the stream gauges is critically important to us, especially as as we go through some uh changing weather events, it seems like in the last few years. So specifically over the last year, just to reinforce what we do in partnership with the City of Marion, um a lot of community outreach. We have a new program called Batch and Build. And that's uh just kind of a a catchy term to describe how we're improving the efficiency of stalling some of these best management practices out in the field. So that that picture on the bottom right there, that's the installation of a a woodchip bioreactor that's actually installed in farm tile. Um, so the the drainage coming from a farm uh can get cleaned of nitrate and reduce nitrate pollution um downstream and and into communities or into watersheds or source water protection areas. So that batch and build is really a way of efficiently uh grouping a number of these practices together to streamline the engineering and construction um of of these practices. Uh, and so we greatly increased the amount of edge-of-field practices that we've been able to implement in the area through that program. Uh, we've recently uh worked with the City of of Marion as well on a creek sign grant application for Indian Creek. So that just brings a lot of awareness to Indian Creek and signs are go- are will hopefully be placed um in Marion and the City of Cedar Rapids with that grant through uh the DNR. Um, we're waiting to hear on that. And then, of course, uh water monitoring in Wanted Creek, uh pretty critical area for the City of Marion. And that includes um looking at things like chlorides and and a number of water quality constituents um in in that area. Um, with that, um I will wrap up. We're happy to answer any questions. Um, like I said, really appreciate the City of Marion and the partnership uh and and the great work that we've been able to do together.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Fran.
So I'm very generally aware of changes in funding for water quality uh analysis and monitoring from the state level. And I I think a lot of that was um handled by the uh University of Iowa. And I know that that has changed. But my question is, you mentioned the uh a component of your activity is is water testing. Do you use that data um or or make use of that data to marry that up with other data sources to speak or to understand not only our watershed for Indian Creek, but adjacent ones? And then the other question is, if you have data that is trending negative over a period of time, wh- what actions does that drive?
Yeah. Uh, great questions and I I'll just step back here to our map of watersheds here. Um, so in the the Cedar River um is actually one of the few watersheds in Iowa where in in totality, the area uh has Watershed Management Authorities uh associated with it. And these Watershed Management Authorities, um in fact, uh some of us sit on multiple Watershed Management Authority Boards. So we're very good at talking to each other and sharing data. Um, as far as water quality data goes, in the Indian Creek Watershed and the uh middle cedar, lower cedar uh watersheds as well, we actually have a kind of a a group partnership where we, for a long time, par- uh worked with CoCollege here on on the water quality data monitoring. Um, uh, and we've got history going back over twenty years of 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 those specific sample sites. So we can have pretty nice access into what's happening in that watershed over a long period of time. But really, the uh the engineered documents that we talked about that were established in two thousand and fifteen, the watershed plans, um that is really helping us drive decisions for where we're putting these practices and focusing on certain source water protection areas or or flood risk areas for uh the biggest benefit to to the money that we end up spending.
One one follow-up question. You mentioned the uh USGS gauge at Thomas Park.
Yes.
Does USGS still um uh fund that and maintain it?
They maintain it, we fund it. So um by and large, most of the USGS gauges are no longer funded through the USGS themselves, but funded through partnerships like this. But they they do the maintenance.
Well, you exposed the concern that was in the back of my mind. Is that gauge data uh available online anywhere?
Yep, publicly available.
If if I can get a link to that, Steve, I'd appreciate that, just out of my own curiosity. Thanks.
Anyone else have anything? Do you, I mean, do you have any uh just a general overview of the what the status of aquatic wildlife in the in the creek? Like, is it same as always? Is it getting worse, better as a as a habitat for wildlife?
Um, we 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 don't focus on that particular aspect as a Watershed Management Authority. All we, although part of the the Watershed Plan does include um the quality of the stream banks themselves and look for erosion, uh but we don't necessarily count aquatic wildlife so much as assess the water quality from a chemistry perspective as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Next, we have a discussion on the budget amendment from Brian.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and Council. So we've just kind of wrapped up the fiscal year twenty five budget at the last session. We adopted that. And so now we're going to switch back gears into this budget for which we'll wrap up on June thirtieth. This is a discussion on the budget amendment. So we do this every year. The state requires that you do not go over budget in any function. And so the functions are there on the screen. And these are different from our from our funds and our departments. They can be a combination of 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 both of them into one function. So the state's concerned with expenditures, but obviously you can adjust revenues also, and you'll see that we are proposing to do that here. So just a overview of the functions where they lie through Q three, which is through March thirty first. So some things to highlight here. A couple there that are trending lower. So the business type activities on on the capital projects, they are capital project driven. And so they're trending lower than we would expect just due to due to timing delays and some projects that are just not quite moving forward as we expected. And then community and economic development, with the exception of that function, which is in partly because of our reorg, you can see that the other operational functions are trending very close to seventy five percent. And so that is a testament to our zero based budgeting. That's actually the closest that I've seen it since I've been here. So that's kudos to all the staff and and the work that they've done to really hone in on our zero based budgeting philosophy. And then the debt service is low because we make our principal payments, which is the majority of our debt service in in May. So we'll talk about three main sections. One is carryovers, one is budget adjustments, and then the other is the compensation study, which everyone is fairly familiar with that that we just implemented. So again, a high level overview of the impact. This is fiscal year twenty four. So I just wanted to highlight that the the overall impact for fiscal year twenty four was a net zero effect for the budget amendment across all functions. And you will see we will do a budget amendment line item in the later slides. So you'll see how that is integrated into the other amendments per function. So we'll talk about carryovers and budget adjustments per function. And so we'll do a kind of summary slide, which will show the overall effect per per function. And then we'll go into a little bit more detail where feel free to stop me, ask any questions, and I can either try to answer them myself or pass them over to the department heads if you guys have any questions. So public safety. So you can see on the screen here. There was some carryover items and the budget adjustment is more on the revenue side than the than the expenditures. So the carryovers for public safety here, I'm not going to go into them, but if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. So carryovers are expenditures that were budgeted in fiscal year twenty three that could not be spent for various reasons. Mostly it's because of the delays of items, or there's a strategic move on the council on on the council behalf. So mostly equipment here that was carried over from fiscal year twenty three. And then these are the budget adjustments. So the ATE program. And so there's not only revenue adjustments, but there is adjustments on the expenditure side. And then something else to note is, so fire truck repairs, we have a higher than usual repair expense on multiple fire trucks, I believe. So for general government, we are adjusting more revenues than expenditures. On the revenue side, this is due to interest rates being still higher than we had anticipated when we put this budget together. And then a couple of adjustments on the operational side. So for culture and recreation, over half of the expenditures that we are proposing to adjust were carryovers. And then you can also see the compensation study, like I said, integrated into these, some of these slides. So culture and recreation in a little bit more detail. On the revenue side, we did have some higher than expected trade in values for our equipment. And then there's the carryovers of some equipment that was carried over from fiscal year twenty three. Health and social services is our smallest function. This is the transit. So this budget adjustment here is just because of a timing issue of a June payment from fiscal year twenty three that we paid in fiscal year twenty four. So no actual real budget adjustment, just because we're going to make thirteen payments in this fiscal year. So so the debt service, we are amending a couple of interest payments for our last year's debt issuance that we were originally planning to capitalize the interest, but we ended up not. So that's those are those adjustments there. And then Public Works. The adjustments on the expenditure side here, the majority of them are actually timing of payments of the player trucks. We do we had budgeted to expend everything that we had budgeted for the player trucks in the in fiscal year twenty four, but there will be some carryover into fiscal year twenty five. That's the majority of these. And then the rest is some insurance claim that we have the revenue to offset the expenditures. So then the business type activities. We are looking to actually adjust the expenditures down. These are project related expenditures. So you can see that it's a mixture of between the public service facility and the trunk sewer and the solid waste replacement. So we're actually going to adjust them down. Those, again, are timing of payments that we had hoped that the project would be done, but these will hit in fiscal year twenty five.
Will just be carried over?
Yes. It's carried over into fiscal year twenty five, but technically still an adjustment for this year. So just to tie all those together, I I I just wanted to show what the total revenue adjustment when you're looking at the state report, so you can tie up the total revenue adjustment on the total expenditure adjustment, which is an overall increase in our ending fund balance projection for fiscal year twenty four. So we can get to some questions, just the next steps. The publication for the so the notice of the public hearing would go in the paper in the next week, and then we would hold a public hearing at the next council meeting to adopt the amendment at that time. Is there any questions for myself or any questions for the departments? Anything you saw on the slides?
Questions? Well, you did a good job. No questions. Thank you, Brian.
I guess there's too many presentations so far.
All right. Next, we have a discussion on recreational fires and code requirements. If Sean. Are you going to tell me I can't have my fire pit anymore?
No.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. And yes, I am here to talk about recreational fires. It's finally getting warm enough that we can start having them outside. We obviously want our residents to be safe when they're doing them. So there are some rules with them, but you can certainly use them safely. First of all, our rules do come from the International Fire Code. So that's an international code that's adopted by our city, but also numerous other cities. So with that, the rules are pretty much the same throughout. So couple things, fire pits. There's really two types of fire pits. There's your traditional fire pit with open flames. The big rule with that is that it'd be twenty five foot from anything bustable. So house, garage, deck, wood fences, things like that. So that is fairly restrictive, but that is so that we don't have fire spreading in other parts of the building. The other one is, if you do have a mesh screen or a spark arrestor on it, it can be down to fifteen feet. And the whole goal is that is so that big sparks and stuff aren't coming out of there and potentially causing fire to spread. So if you have a spark arrestor, you can be down to fifteen feet. The last row on the open fire pit is a three foot diameter, bring clean wood. So no yard waste, no construction material, no things like that to produce a lot of smoke. So as long as you bring clean wood, you're typically fairly good. The second category is like a natural gas fire pit, and those are becoming more and more popular. Those will be within ten feet of anything to bust them. You don't have the open flame. You don't typically have the wood come or sparks coming off of them. The picture up here is actually kind of a newer thing, and it's called a solo stove. This still falls under the ten foot requirement because it still has open flaming, still gets stuff blown into it. So there's still a requirement for that to be ten foot away. The picture actually shows it being on the deck, which is kind of a marketing thing. But if you actually go to their specifications, it'll specifically tell you that you can't put it on a wood deck. So per the National Fire Code, it's still ten feet. There are actually gas fired fire pits you can literally install inside of a deck or inside of a porch, but that has to be done per the manufacturer's installation. So typically it's installed with spacing around it so that there's basically no way that that can ignite or warm the wood deck. My last topic is nuisance fires. Unfortunately, when people are having recreational fires, sometimes their neighbors call and complain about them. So even if they are doing everything legally, it's spaced twenty five foot away. If the smoke is blowing into the neighbor's property or into their house, then we will typically put those out. Any questions on recreational fires?
Questions? Do you do you get many complaints about smoke?
No, we don't.
From neighbors?
And sadly, a lot of times it's a kind of ongoing neighbor dispute that's fueling some of those.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So what is if you were to get a complaint, what kind of what's your enforcement process? How how does that play out?
We just typically put the fire out and explain the fire code. You know, if they're if they're too close to things, we will extinguish it and provide them copy of the fire code requirements. They know that, hey, we're too close and what they need to do to it right next time. But if it's a nuisance, then we explain that somebody complained and and that that's why I had to put it out.
But you actually respond then to the location where the problem has been reported?
Correct.
Okay. Is that a full blown response, truck?
It is one engine company, but they typically go like no license sirens and.
Right, okay, okay. Good to know.
Okay. Oh, chief, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't see you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to add on the on the nuisance. Oftentimes, what we encourage our residents is to connect with their neighbors ahead of time. That way, if they have special requests or accommodations, generally, it may be the location or the way the wind's blowing, or if there is other things that could be done to to minimize the impact to neighbors. We've seen, I I know, just not just in this agency, but other agencies across the country, that makes a big difference just when you connect with your neighbor before you're going to do it. Just say, hey, and that way, if they have an issue that comes up, they can directly contact their neighbor and say, hey, is there any way, you know, next time you can move it or something? That does make a difference.
Do we share this information in the messenger? If we haven't, it might be a good idea. If if it's been a while, might be a good idea to, you know, it's a timely thing, you know, to put some some of this information in the messenger since it's information that, you know, it's interesting to people and it's good to keep refreshing your memory on what the rules are. So.
Good discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have fireworks discussion.
All the fun stuff. So this is the annual fireworks presentation. I went through and I looked at our comp cities, who allows them and who doesn't. You'll see there's more that have banned them over the years than allow them. Most of the ones that allow them are are the same as us. It's July fourth or New Year's Eve. If you remember the two thousand and twenty three community survey, there was about six hundred respondents. We had forty four percent of the respondents strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with the use of fireworks. Nineteen percent were neutral and thirty six percent were opposed either strongly or somewhat. So I think there's a little bit of an edge towards people who want to continue doing what we're doing now. When we look at the complaints, again, this is us in Cedar Rapids. Cedar Rapids ban fireworks, but you can say still see that people are shooting them there, and you can see our numbers there. They kind of bounce around a little bit. And this is this past year. So that we had eighty nine complaints. We did two citations. We did do one municipal infraction, which was the new process that KARAP dreamed up last year. And we went through that process. That one was settled with the homeowner. And what that allows us to do is a lot of times when we get the calls about complaints, by the time we get there, they're not actively shooting them. But if we see the the remnants of them in their driveway or in their yard, we can we can side them. And that's what we did with this case. There was one minor injury that the fire department responded to that was during the legal time to shoot them. Not nearly as bad as the ones we had a couple of years ago where the gentleman about lost his hand down there behind the police department. Again, Cedar Rapids, they had seven hundred and sixty one complaints this past year. They had sixteen citations. Even when you go back and you look at their numbers on the citations, I know for at least the past two years, they've actually run like an overtime detail on the Fourth of July to try to enforce more fireworks citations. And it's difficult to do, you know, and and with our folks having to answer calls in between, it's 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 tough. As as far as the ordinance, I don't see any reason to change it unless you guys want to pursue that. But based on the calls that we're seeing and the complaints, we're not seeing a marked increase from what we've seen in years past.
Okay, is that it? Questions for the chief? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just I mean, we we bring this up. People bring it up once in a while, but it kind of, if you look at the data there, it kind of shows that whether it's approved to to set them off on the Fourth of July or not, people are still going to do it regardless. So to me, I'd rather put more effort into where they could be sold at a state level because the state's in charge of that through the legislature. And people talk about that. I'd rather go back to reducing or minimizing where they could be sold and keep the fact that you can do them on the fourth, but yet let's reduce where they can be sold. So I'd rather put effort into that one than than the other way.
Yeah, I it seems like we've kind of settled into this, you know, just a routine thing and the complaints are much fewer. Even I I don't know that I really noticed anyone setting off fireworks after eleven o'clock this last year. I think people are kind of abiding by the by the rules and for the most part. And I agree with Steve, as long as they can buy them, you're not going to stop people from using them. So if you're happy with how things are going, then.
I'm happy, Mayor. That's what that's what.
Got to keep the chief happy. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Chief. Okay, that brings us to our agenda review. Thursday. I see the first item is at the bottom of the second page, A eight. Is there anything prior to A eight that has concerned anyone or questions? Clarifications, anything? All right, we'll go with eight eight, Leanne.
Thank you. At the end of the last quarter, quarter ended December thirty first, we did two separate presentations, one on the capital improvement program and one then following with the quarterly report. At that time, I did say to city council that we would combine the two for one complete report. And in doing that, we also took the feedback city council provided regarding the columns on the Capitol report. Just really wanted to highlight the item to to let you know and follow up and close the loop on that. So we did do that and wanted to see if council had any. So we did do that and wanted to see if Council had any additional feedback.
Alright, thanks, Leanne. The next item that's marked is A seventeen, is there anything prior to A seventeen that anyone needs to discuss? Alright, Kara, A seventeen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the artway decoration policy that's on the agenda, I wanted to just highlight. Um, as has been mentioned several times tonight, we have a lot of events coming up and, um, we have some basic rules for decoration, but, um, with the nature of the artway being a little bit different from the parks and, um, also being, um, kind of a newer area for people to use with the events that are scheduled up there. We wanted to make sure that there were some good ground rules so that we don't have damage to the art that's up there, which we have had due to people fixing decorations to them. We want to make sure that we're not intruding on the areas that we only have an easement to and putting permanent decorations. But we also wanted to protect the city's rights to decorate for events and holidays, the way we do the winter lights and things like that. So that's what this policy is there to accomplish and also to make sure that we don't have messy leftovers. Um, that way, if you show up for your event on a Saturday, if there was something there on Friday night, you're not, um, arriving facing a bunch of glitter, confetti, or sidewalk chalk messages that maybe you don't want part of your event. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Kara? Alright, the remainder of the agenda is not marked. Uh, any questions on anything on the remainder of the agenda?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, uh, concerning E ten and then, uh, following that F one. Um, just a simple question on E ten, and this is, uh, for the fire training facility, uh, project. What's the location of that?
Right next to the Public Services Building, the new one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a service road that comes back just to the west of it.
Right.
And it's just on the, the, just to the west.
Okay.
Public services.
Alright, that was all I needed to know, is just get a geographic fix. Okay, thank you. F one, um, it's regarding the Lynn County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I guess the question that I have is, is in general terms, what is the scope of that mitigation plan? What does it cover?
It's a rather large scope and it really does encompass all of Lynn County communities when it comes to hazard mitigation. Very much like any disaster, it's really focused on disaster, uh, recovery and how do we move forward from here? Uh, what are those issues that we see? Um, so we'll be able, the nice thing about this, this time, I guess I'm gonna say it's nice, maybe it's not so nice, but we're able to really draw upon derecho uh, for this one where many of our communities, unless we had flood issues, really didn't get to really, um, have the real, uh, experience, I guess, as we work through the hazard mitigation. And then from that, what it does is then, uh, it gets approved, um, at the state level, Homeland Security and the FEMA level. So when we do have disasters, um, then we have this, we have this opportunity for recovery.
So has this plan been developed or, um, or redeveloped post-deratio based on those learnings that we had from that event?
This will be part of that because it's in, it's in, um, every five years that we redo this mitigation plan.
So, but it is an existing plan?
It is.
Okay, um, I'd love to see a link to it if it's available.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that's separate from our own city?
Yes.
Plan?
Yes, yeah, this is Lynn, Lynn County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
But would there be an interface between that plan and our local response planning?
Yeah, we'll build, we'll build upon. Absolutely.
Yes, so the, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is, um, a broader scope community risk assessment in regards to disaster planning and response. Uh, this coming year, we are gonna be doing a very specific focused, uh, community risk assessment standards of cover study, which will incorporate, um, a lot of the elements that are from the Hazard Mitigation Plan, but more specifically focused on Marion.
Okay, alright, thanks. That, that's good context to have. I, anyway, I'd appreciate just whatever is currently exists, having a chance just to, uh, take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else on the agenda that we need to discuss? Okay, that brings us to our closed session. Oh, no, wait, yes, our closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation and personnel matters as, as permitted under section twenty-one, five, one, C and section twenty-one, five, one, I of the Code of Iowa. This is two separate matters.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and personnel matters. May we have the, uh, legal counsel statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five, one, C and twenty-one point five, one, I.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you all for joining us. We're now adjourned to closed session.